All right, all right, all right. Welcome. Oh, we got another commissioner coming in the door. Commissioner Smith, why don't you come and join us? All right. Welcome, everybody, to the July 10, 2024 City of Edina Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the rest of the planning commission, we are grateful you are here in person. And for those tuning in remotely, your thoughts, your feedback, your participation is vital as we navigate change together here in Edina specifically regarding the ways in which people want to use their land. But tonight, we have one public hearing. I'll get into kind of the details and the instructions for that when we get closer to it. But just so you know what to expect, I'll do a quick rundown of the agenda, and then we'll open this meeting. So we'll have a call to order, followed by roll call. We'll have an approval of tonight's meeting agenda, and then the prior meeting's minutes. Then we open it up to the community comment period, which is a chance for anyone who is here in person to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda. And then after that, we have one public hearing, and it's a variance request. We have no reports or recommendations, which sometimes include sketch plan reviews, which unlike a public hearing, is a chance for us to give non-binding feedback to a more informal potential application. So instead, we go right to chair member comments, followed by staff comments, and then adjournment. It is important to know that we take all feedback that we hear before the meeting that comes to us through email or through our Better Together Edina.org engagement website. We had no comments for this particular project shared with us. But it's important you know that any project that's on the table is on there for you to learn about and you to comment about. So feel free to tune into that and take a look at what's coming on the July 24 meeting. There is a project in Southdale area. So take a look at that, and if you have any comments, we will see those. So without further ado, we'll call this meeting to order. And then roll call.
Commissioner Elkhayer.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Honeman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
You guys are sharing nice. You could just take your own, you know? Help you out a little. All right, so next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. I'd welcome a motion if it all looks good.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes, June 26. If there's no proposed changes, I'd welcome a motion to that, too.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the community comment period. Like I mentioned, this is your chance to talk about anything not on tonight's agenda for those who are here in person. You have three minutes. You can come to a podium, state your full name, address, and tell us what we need to hear. And you can come forward if you'd like. All right, seeing just smiles and no one moving, we'll move right along. Okay. Next, we have our public hearing. Like I said, we only have one tonight. It's B 2405. It's a front yard setback variance request for 6716 Arrowhead Pass. Just a little bit of this process. So when a formal application is made, the city has 60 days to make a ruling on that. Staff puts together a report as they look at all of the, you know, facts on the table and how it jibes with our current codes. And they provide us that report, and they provide a presentation based on that report right now. And we, the planning commission, will have an exchange back and forth with staff. After that, we let the applicant, if they would like, to provide their own presentation, followed by another back and forth. And then following that, we have the actual public hearing part, and that's when we'll open it to a public hearing. For those who are here, same to the community comment, you have three minutes, and you state your full name, address, and you can speak about your thoughts on this request. For those tuning in remotely, if you would like to get in the queue to speak, I'll give you the instructions right now, and I'll repeat them again when this time comes, but this allows you to get ready now. So if you're tuning in and you'd like to participate with the public hearing, please call 312-535-8110 and enter access code 26332120259. The password is 5454. Then press star three on your keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak. This will be on the screen later so that you can see that, and maybe right now. So that should give you the right info to tune in. And then after the public hearing is closed, then we take it back and we deliberate as a commission and provide a recommendation for approval or denial of the request. Without further ado, Planner Akker, take it away.
Thank you, Chair members of the planning commission. The applicant is actually requesting a plan modification for a variance that was granted back in 2021. It was for a tear-down rebuild located at 6716 Arrowhead Pass, and that is located right here. You can see the house. It's been built. Actually, the variance request or modification to the plans for the 2021 variance approval have to do with the site work that needs to be done and completed on the property. Currently, there is no certificate of occupancy that's been issued on the house because there is some outstanding site work that needs to be done. There were some retaining walls that were installed, and they needed to be engineered. So they need to be safe. They needed to be replaced and engineered. There's also a stormwater trench that needs to be installed. And as part of that, this is the house that had originally been there, had a pool and an outbuilding. It's a multi-level home. I point this out because the original variance request matched or nearly matched the setback of the back corner of the house from the cul-de-sac. As you can see from the survey, the other two homes that are adjacent are very far back from the front lot lines, which severely affected the buildable area of the lot. So the highlighted area is actually the buildable area of the lot. It's about a little less than 650 square feet. The house was built in generally the location of the old house and that corner of the garage, the back corner of the garage, is approximately at the same setback as that old house. Now, moving forward, the house was built. There were some improvements to the site. However, they were deemed defective by the building department. A certificate of occupancy could not be issued. There is a new owner for the property. As part of the variance request, they would like to modify the site plan to allow... There is a small patio on the west side and also on the east side. They would like to expand the patio to the north and to the south, and then also expand the patio along the north side of the house and towards the east, which is the red area on this site plan. Those are the areas of improvement that they are needing a variance for because they're modifying that original site plan that went along with the 2021 variance approval. You'll notice that some of those improvements actually do conform to the ordinance requirements, which is the entire house is outside of the buildable area of the lot. So it's an extremely challenging lot. The site work will finish the retaining walls and also the trench drain that's needed for stormwater management. And then it will allow for the installation of the patio. And then also, there's an extensive landscaping plan that they are planning to install. None of the conditions have changed in terms of the approval findings for the 2021 variance. Everything remains the same. It's just a matter of modification for accommodation to those slight increases in patio area. Staff does recommend approval of the variance modification. The recommended action would be approval of the 85.9-foot front yard setback variance for the property at 6716 Arrowhead Pass. Approval would be subject to the findings listed in the staff report and are the practical difficulty is caused by the required average front yard setback requirement and the cul-de-sac setback. There's virtually very little buildable area of the lot. There are circumstances that are unique to this subject property. Those unique circumstances include the two street frontages and the cul-de-sac that severely cut into the buildable area of the lot. The proposed modifications to the 2021 variance granted are reasonable due to the circumstances that are unique and not self-created. And the proposal would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The site modifications will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. All of those patio improvements will maintain the required minimum setback along that north side, and it's also within the maximum 50% hard surface or impervious surface coverage requirement. With that, I can stop and answer any questions that you have. There's Patrick Sarver with the Civil Site Group here, who worked on the designs, and then also Richard Brahma, who is the realtor representing the homeowner. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
Can you go over the table explaining what changed since last time? Because I'm kind of confused. I tried reading this like five times and understanding what it is we're approving.
So what you're approving is actually the plan modification. The change is that the plans are tied to... The variance was tied to plans presented, and they are changing the fact that this area of patio is increasing in size and within the area that's outside of the buildable area, outside of that yellow triangular piece. Anytime you look at a property, and the variance is actually the closest point to whatever the structure is or improvement is to the lot line. So this actually is much further from the lot line than what the variance, original variance request was for. It's actually for that back corner of the garage. That's not changing. It's really a question of a plan modification that was approved for that 2021 variance.
So the building has not changed? Is that true? Has not changed?
Not at all.
Okay. Okay, so we're just looking at the patio, and that meets all city requirements. Is that what you're saying?
It will meet all of the city requirements, but it is a modification from the group plan.
Right, so, okay. So that's all we're looking at, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Just some context. Like oftentimes, if a plan changes and something happens, you know, usually the building hasn't been built, and it will change, and we'll see something totally different. But since that variance is tied to that specific site plan, which includes the building, even though the building hasn't changed, since that's changed, we need to kind of grant this. It's almost like a subvariance, you know? Does that make sense?
So this is something that the staff would normally review and approve, just a design change to the plans, but for the fact that it's tied to the variance, which has nothing to do with the changes that they're making. Is that right?
Unless their changes went beyond, you know, the acceptable standard, which they don't.
Just a quick question. I'm curious, just the statement that the home is not livable. Is that something that's unique here? Because that's the first time I've kind of... I know while you're building a home, right? It's going through its process, and then, you know, you can't stay in it until it's completed. Is that what's happening here? Or is there something unique about this that doesn't make it livable at this stage?
Well, the home is, as far as I know, it's livable. But the building department cannot issue a certificate of occupancy if the site work is not complete. And there was an issue with the retaining walls because they were not properly engineered, and so they were deemed unsafe. And that has nothing to do with the occupancy of the house. It's just that... And the trench drain was not installed, and they've had to tear up some other work. They're trying to finish up the site work, and a certificate of occupancy will not be issued until all of that site work is done as well. And to make sure that it matches all of the plans that had been approved and that also were submitted for permit application and approved through that process. So once the entire project is done and complete, then they can receive a certificate of occupancy. Really, it's not affecting the house. It's the entire site.
So just a follow-up there, just so, you know, me just trying to be curious. You could live in a house even though you have not received a certificate of occupancy? Is that possible? So your house is livable. You could live in it, right?
Yes.
Everything is fine. They just don't have that certificate?
Yes. I don't want to speak for the building department, but they haven't had any problems with the house that I'm aware of. I was made aware of the fact that a certificate of occupancy has not been issued, given the fact that the site work is not complete, and it wasn't done according to the original plan, and it wasn't done with the retaining walls had to be corrected.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I guess this would be, we'd give a chance to the applicant team to either provide a different presentation or just stand for questions if we have any. But we'd welcome you up. Just state your name, your address, who you are, what you do, you know, all that stuff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Patrick Sarver, landscape architect with Civil Site Group. Chris did a wonderful job of explaining the project. It's pretty straightforward. We're just trying to reconcile the plans with the approvals that are in place to get the project completed. We'll stand for questions if you have any.
Great. Thanks for standing. So yeah, maybe, no. Thank you. That was quick. Good.
Thank you.
All right, so now is the time we'll open up to a public hearing. So again, this is a chance for anyone who's here or tuning in remotely. We will first open the table to anyone who is here that would like to speak about this. You have three minutes to do so, and you can come to the podium.
It's amazing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Best to follow the rules here. I'm Richard Brahma. I'm here on behalf of the homeowner. He asked me to speak on his behalf, just to be here. He is currently in Vegas practicing with the national team for the Olympics. So obviously, he couldn't be here. So my address is 9371 Kiowa Trail, Chanhassen, Minnesota. And we have with us here Patrick Sarver, which you just met, and then also the gentleman who stepped up. That is Amit Sella, and he is the contractor on the project. And we're here really only to answer any of your questions as they come up, specifically related to anything in this project. So you've got the whole team here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so let's turn it over to the virtual queue. I know we put the info up on there, but we'll state it again for anyone who's tuning in. You can call 312-535-8110. Enter access code 26332120259. The password is 5454. Press star three to get in the queue to speak. We'll give it a minute?
Yes.
Okay.
One minute, starting now.
Any music yet?
No, sorry. It's been one minute, and nobody has joined the queue to speak, so I think we're safe to proceed.
The longest minute ever. All right. I know. I'd welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. The public hearing is closed. And now we'll take it back to the commission to deliberate. I'd welcome any comments or motions.
Chair Bennett, I have a question for the applicant, if I could.
Sure.
I'm desperate to know what sport the owner is training with the Olympic team for.
Basketball.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you. Any comments?
You know, when I look at this plan, I'm going to vote in favor of this. But if this had come to me before, if I had been part of this prior, I would have asked that all of those retaining walls be moved away from the property line. Just because I live in a neighborhood where properties are on top of each other and property lines are where everything is kind of like left over and like left to the adjacent neighbor, and then zoning laws change. Being able to access landscaping in the back, I realize the neighboring lots are higher. Being able to access or get access to those areas, I think, is important. You know, so I'm going to be in favor of this. But if I had seen the retaining walls, originally, I would have asked for them to be relocated a bit.
Thank you. Welcome a motion, too.
I'll just say that I ran by the property on Monday, and the landscaping is gorgeous. It's very close to my house, and it fits right in with Indian Hills. But, you know, it's definitely above and beyond, so very nice. And on top of that, I would motion to approve the amendment to the 2021 variance approval based on the findings in the staff report.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Congratulations. The variance has been approved. Thank you. Have a great evening. And that concludes the bulk of our work tonight, so that's quick. And now we move... Thanks a lot. Now we'll move to chair and member comments, if there are any. Yep.
This is just a follow-up to the certificate of occupancy question. So I think I got most of that, right? Like, a property could be livable, completely fine. But then, until you get that certificate of occupancy, I guess, what does that carry? Like, what's the penalty if your home does not have that? Are you living in that house illegally, essentially? That's what I'm trying to get to. Like, what's the meaning of that if you could still live in the home and you don't have that certificate yet?
Well, the building department will issue a temporary CO if there are some things that need to be taken care of. And once those things are taken care of, then the certificate, the permanent certificate of occupancy can be issued. In this instance, because of the retaining walls, there wasn't going to be a certificate of occupancy because they're very high retaining walls, and they were not engineered. And there was concern. There was a safety concern. So regardless of whether you're living in the house, there was a safety concern on the site. So there wasn't going to be even a temporary certificate of occupancy issued until those things were rectified. So it's not a function of the house in this particular instance. It was the site work that needed to correction.
So I could understand, if you have to sell a home, I'm sure a bank would look at, do you have a CO in place, right? Maybe they might look at that. I still don't understand. Like, I get what you're saying, but I still don't see the need for it. If you could live in a home, and you don't have it signed off by the city, you know? So that's what I'm trying to get to.
You would have to get a temporary certificate of occupancy.
They're not living there.
They're not living there. There's nobody living in the house currently.
And it would be an insurance issue, too. So every building that goes through the building department and has plans stamped by the building department, when the building department, when the project is finished, that's when... So your house, it's not necessary or needed. You could sell your house because it's a livable house. But if a set of plans go through the building department, the building officials check to make sure it's all the structural engineering and the things that are needed by code, life safety issues are taken care of. And then as soon as a building is commissioned for the first time, it gets a certificate of occupancy.
Gotcha. So, yeah, I was confusing something. It's livable, but no one's living there.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
Nobody has occupied that house.
Okay.
It's been vacant.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that.
And also, like, from a tax perspective, you couldn't depreciate a building, like an apartment building, if you owned it, until you had a certificate of occupancy. It's not considered complete until you have that CO.
Good question, though, and helpful for people listening, I'm sure. Any other chair and member comments? Oh, we'll start... Oh, my gosh, we got a few. All right.
Mine's quick. I'm not aware. I don't... Does the city concern itself with financing of... Like, I'm wondering, there's quite a few properties where the city council has approved it. We have approved it, or it doesn't matter, I suppose, if we've approved it. But the city council has approved it, and we have an outstanding questions. I don't know that they have either about the financing. And they're sitting, and they're vacant. Do we know if that's because of they haven't been able to get financing?
The commercial properties on France?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I don't know the official rule. But because those are all part of a PUD with multiple components to it, and the various components, parts, and developers couldn't get it all financed collectively the way they had originally planned.
So they're still waiting, and they're still trying to get it financed, or...
I guess I'm not aware of... I haven't spoken to them directly, but only through networks, events, and stuff, knew as of several months ago. The one by the US Bank, they just, it doesn't pencil anymore because of interest and inflation.
And the ones, the other ones further south on France, same thing?
I speculate, I mean, I imagine that's the case. I mean, the lending environment, like we saw with Evereve and Edina Realty Building. I mean, from 2019, when things were booming, to now, it's double what it used to be.
The city council doesn't look at that. I mean, there's, approval is in function of that. Okay, thanks.
Good question. Maybe we could provide an update when we know it. Because it becomes kind of public knowledge if someone, you know, lets a purchase agreement go. No, but it would be once they let it go, or if you knew personally. I mean, we can share certain things, like, for instance, the one right over here across... 100, like that didn't pencil out, and Opus has walked away from it. So, like...
But we only know that because of the relationship with the city, if it's two private individuals.
Oh, sure, sure. Correct.
And on Better Together, there is Development Tracker.
Yeah.
So when things become more public, the city does update.
Yeah, we're just in this unusual cycle right now, where we've seen a lot of things approved, and they've sat and not happened. Where maybe five years before that, what we've approved has mostly happened, but... Question?
Speaking of Better Together, how is that advertised? I was at an event with a bunch of neighbors and mentioned it, and everybody goes, what's that? And I, being who I am, I knew what it was. I didn't realize, but it was eight other couples, and none of them had heard of it. So I was just wondering, how do we get that out there currently, and are there ways we could do it better?
Were you in Edina, or?
Yes, I was.
I was in Wisconsin.
No, I was down the street from my house and was just amazed that none of them had heard of it.
Clearly, it ought to be better advertised, if that's the case. I'm...
It was a function of the pandemic. Better Together.
Oh.
It's relatively new. Yep.
Sorry, I don't know if I'll be able to speak to it perfectly, but yeah, it's relatively new. It did come to be during COVID. Multiple different departments use it. So engineering uses it for streets. You know, we use it for public hearings and development. In terms of advertising, though, we may have to get back to you on exactly all of those routes that administration and other departments advertise it on.
Yeah, I mean, if you go to the city website, it is one of like the top popular services, and it just says, and I kind of people. I don't know if you would know what that means, or, you know, it's just Better Together Edina. I don't know if you would know to click on that, for instance.
I can speak to this a little bit, too. So, Lauren over here. In communications, we use it a lot to tie back to like big stories that we're doing. So when we have edition Edina newsletter come out, and we have a story that's kind of featuring something on Better Together, we put that link there so people can go check it out. We also put it in every public notice, so when people want to go give their feedback, they can go directly to that link to provide that. But, yeah, we also have it on our main website, and I think we probably have some different marketing materials and stuff out there, too. So, hope that helps.
It's almost like obviously triggered if something happens close to you and you get the notice, but, I mean, that's good feedback, just in general, about how to get people connected to that, because it's not just readily on the website as one of the tabs. It's, I mean, I'm looking at it. We know what it is, but if you didn't, I don't know if you would click on that. So, that's good feedback that we should follow up on, for sure.
Yeah, but I mean, if you go to Development Tracker, for example, and you click on more info, it goes right there. I mean, I think everything the city does ties back to it. I mean, maybe not on the homepage, but any announcement the city does pretty much always ties back to it. So, I mean, I'm not saying people don't know about it. They don't. But they're probably not engaged in any particular project or researching anything.
This was, we were, it started because we were talking about the park renovations, and they didn't realize that there was a mechanism for them to vote, and somebody saw a sign and was like, what is this going on? So, I don't, I don't know what avenues other people log on to the Edina website, or follow them on Facebook or whatever, but it just, if you don't care about land use, that may be not the first thing that comes to your mind when you go to the city. You're probably there to pay your water bill or something. So, and it was 16 adults, and my husband and I were the only ones that knew about it. So, take that for what it's worth.
Right, but like, they just redid Weber Park, and they had signs all over the park, and they had, you know, the barcodes to go there and would go to that site. All the plans were on the site. I mean, I've reviewed them, you know, and not because I'm a commissioner, you know? I mean, I don't know. I think the city does a really good job of advertising it. It's like in every communication, it seems like. I just think people aren't engaged in a particular project, and so they just don't, they've never clicked on anything or done anything that would take them there.
Can I change the subject?
No. Please do.
Tomorrow, there is two pop-ups for the Lincoln-Lundonary Small Area Plan pop-ups. The Men Collaborative and the city, and a few of us, and hopefully a few neighbors are going to position ourselves at the Caribou, at Lincoln and Lundonary, and at the Lodin, and talk to people who are interested in the project. So, one is at... One, you know the times?
I have it all right here. I was going to talk about it. Yeah, so, so we are having two pop-ups tomorrow and two, or one on Monday. The two tomorrow are from 1:00 to 2:30, and that's at the Lundonary Shops, at the Caribou Patio. There'll be some informational boards out there, and there'll be some interview forums. We'll be interviewing people to see, you know, why they're there and what they want to see from the neighborhood. And we'll be handing out postcards and water bottles, so if you want a water bottle, stop by and say hello. And we'll have people there, including Meriwether and myself, and then two people, two residents, Steve and Corey from the working group will be there also. The second one tomorrow is 3:00 to 4:30, and that's at the Lodin in the Club Room. Same thing, five informational boards from a previous presentation the city gave in the neighborhood, and same activities and the same water bottles. Don't come by twice and get two water bottles. And then on Monday, from 5:00 to 6:30, it's at Walnut Ridge Park. Same thing, and then at that particular meeting will be Meriwether, Steve, Ryan, and Corey.
Really cool way to engage the community.
Yes.
Something like this to that level, I don't think has been done before. It's really creative and unique, and commend you guys for the awesome...
And this information is also on Better Together.
Never heard of it, but I'll look for it.
And then there's another event Thursday, again, from 5:00 to 6:30 at Weber Park. They are having ribbon cutting ceremony, and that was two years of reconstruction and flood infrastructure. So that was quite the project. They took 90-some houses out of a flood plain. It was a lot of work.
Yeah, that was a long-term win for the city when they bought that from Minneapolis and had plans to potentially help residents out with a potential project. And, I mean, it's a pretty cool one all the way through, except maybe the temporary condition of when you don't have fully grown trees. It will look awesome. Anything else? You had something.
Okay. Couple of months ago, I mentioned the National Zoning Atlas. The URL is zoningatlas.org. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, I'd encourage you to do so. I brought it up in the context of working on the Utah Zoning Atlas when I was out in Salt Lake City. The basic premise of the zoning atlas is that there's 30-some thousand different zoning districts in the US, and they all are using different ways, different language, different structures, as we've kind of started to learn in our zoning audit. So their goal is in their, excuse me, marketing, is to digitize, demystify, and democratize zoning. And when I got back here, I got in touch with a professor at the U who was working on trying to put together a proposal to do a Minnesota zoning atlas, and I got some great news from him a couple of weeks ago, that they have been funded by the University of Minnesota's Institute on the Environment to do this work. So I thought I'd just read the media release. It's quite short. So the project is called Mapping and Reforming Land Use Zoning in Minnesota. Land use zoning determines where people can live and work, structures transportation options, and are a critical influence on carbon emissions. However, zoning rules are opaque and hard to study comparatively because of the different languages by district. A federated effort to create a national zoning atlas is standardizing zoning rules nationally. This project team will contribute a public use Minnesota zoning atlas to the national project, significantly improving our understanding of land use law in Minnesota. Additionally, the team will produce a report identifying where changed zoning could support significant reductions in driving and carbon emissions, and a comprehensive manual for cities on how to enable adaptive urban infill housing to help support a transition to denser cities with reduced carbon emissions. So they're going to be working on this for the next year. Their goal is to be done, I don't imagine they'll have every single zoning district in Minnesota done, but they'll probably have the zoning districts that represent 95% of the population in Minnesota done. And there'll be workshops and other opportunities to digest the work that they've done at that time, and I'll keep everybody informed of it.
That's awesome. Thanks a lot. Great news. Great push. Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
Sure. So, yes, I was going to mention the pop-ups, and then, and as Commissioner Feld said, Better Together Edina, we have a sub-site on there for the Lincoln-Lundonary project, and there's places where users, I kind of mentioned this last time, but there are places where users can, or residents can enter opinions on what should happen in this area, so we'd love to hear your feedback on that. And, let's see, there's a Q&amp;A section, Members Forum. It lists the members who are the citizens who are on the commission, on the work group. And then, in terms of the areas of potential change, we have a first draft of our document, and I expect that we'll be presenting it at the next, at the next meeting for discussion and potentially approval.
Ryan? Commissioner Padilla?
You mentioned that at the next meeting, there's a Southdale project that we're looking at. Could you be more specific?
Let me just pull up BetterTogetherEdina.org.
What's that?
It is the one on the west side of France, the Orion Development Project. I think it's the Phase Two piece of it.
It's on Gallagher.
Yes. Pull it up, the...
Yes.
Not the one with the water table problem, right?
Yeah, 727250 France Avenue. Final Site Plan Review and Zoning Ordinance Amendment. It's for Phase Two. It includes a reduction in first floor ceiling height from 16 to 14 feet, and I think there's an elimination of the ground level retail.
Thank you.
Entirely. Anyways, check it out, comment, so we can be best prepared for next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know if everyone subscribes anymore, but the Sun Current had an interesting op-ed challenging both us and the city council to think about the wow factor when we're looking at big projects. They were specifically, I think, referencing the Macy's site and just were expressing disappointment at the lack of creativity. I thought it was well-written and interesting, not endorsing an opinion anywhere, but she did, the author did talk about, you know, Centennial and Southdale being the first enclosed mall, and like that took a certain courage and a certain wow, and we're a community that was founded on that sort of concept. Let's keep pushing ourselves to do that in planning and on the city council. So, well-written.
Thank you for sharing. Anything else from anyone? Staff comments?
Nothing much to report, other than just a reminder, we will have a work session at the next meeting. Hold that up here. I'm sorry, on August 14th, we'll have a 5:00 work session on the Cannabis Zoning Ordinance Amendment.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. The meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, everyone. That was like that previous project.